And the kind of the break even point of how many nights you need to do a short term rental to make as much as a year long lease really depends on the neighborhood and the size of the unit. And so we've started to do some looking in terms of what are the, where that is depending on your size and we can share more of that data later. One more piece says the, for the primary residents or people under 90 nights that won't see any new regulations. One thing that I ought to add is they might also see a slight uptick in business activity under these regulations if you consider the demand as consistent and the more commercial operations are closed down, then people will be funneling more towards the primary residence So what happens if you hit the 90 night threshold? If you do not reside onsite, Councilmember Herbald, as you were asking about earlier, you would no longer be able to continue renting for that year. So, under this proposal, there's no allowance for year round commercial rentals.
So I'm just, my question is practically for the owner, that means they must become a landlord or they have, they shutter the building?
I think, I mean, they would have up to 90 nights a year that they could do through short term rental. They could opt to put that unit on the long term rental market. They could opt to go to more sort of 30, 60, 90 day leases, so still have some flexibility to have that unit available. But yeah, they would have to make a choice.
I could certainly see moving forward a regulatory environment where we say to people, if you're going to get into this business, these are our rules. But I really have a problem with forcing people to become landlords who are currently in this business that may not want to be landlords. I think that-
That's their choice.
But it, or they leave their building closed. And I think that potentially could create a very toxic landlord tenant relationship. Landlords are, don't have any other, I don't want to say it again because I don't want the, I'm concerned about the up, or the relationship that that could create between landlords and tenants if people for the rest of the year have to be landlords in order to have an option other than shuttering their home. And I-
You say shuttering, I guess I don't, like-
Closing it.
Their home, like-
Or not their home, their property.
She's talking about the offsite, non-resident user who is-
It's hard for me to ma, I'm trying to understand this scenario in which someone's just going to leave a place vacant out of-
Well, they're, it sounds like they have two choices. They either leave the place vacant or they become a long term landlord for the rest of the year. And I can imagine some people, or they could sell the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think folks that are doing short term rentals are a landlord of type also. I mean, they're, you know, whether someone's renting for a day or three weeks or a month, I mean, we can use a different term and legally we do, but it's a similar operation.
Yeah, I think the obligations and responsibilities of the landlord are very different from that of an operator of short term housing.
Let's keep going.
Evictions and just cause and tenant relocation assistance ordinance.
So that's a, that's an interesting valid point and that's what you and all of us will have to weigh what, where we're going to place the value on preserving, allowing folks to take advantage of the economic benefits that these online rental platforms provide versus protecting long term rentals in the city.
And I think, you know, in our conversation in your committee yesterday, we were talking about discriminatory policies as landlords and how we want to prevent those. And the question came up about what applies to Airbnb and I believe, you know, I think it's a gray area, but I heard from our Office of Civil Rights that the same type of discrimination rules should be applying to platforms like this.
Oh, absolutely. Under public accommodations.
And so I think, I think some of the-
Just like a grocery store.
Right. And so I think some of the burdens that you identify that come with landlords, because that's a significant business we're well aware of, probably also apply to short term rentals and we just haven't got into the regulatory business of that. But I hear from friends who say, I have trouble renting on Airbnb because my name sounds like I'm an immigrant and people turn me down all the time. And now I don't know how to demonstrate that, but that is clearly an experience and that's a problem. And so there's, we may be getting into that space as we go through this too.
Can I ask just one question, David, about the, or to Nate or to Ally, about this sort of final bullet, no year round commercial listings? Is that intended to get at what we've heard about, at least in anecdotal instances where a commercial entity comes in and buys up an apartment building and effectively turns the entire apartment building into short term Airbnb type rentals?
I think the distinction we're making is between people who live in their own home and are using their own home for revenue for whatever purpose versus folks who are running a business activity on an external property and doing that year round.
Is there, is there some sort of, I mean, I think one of the things that I'm concerned about is how do we get at those bad actors, as I think some people called them during public comment? So maybe there's a consideration here for a threshold question. You know, if you've got a certain number of locations on a particular site that are listed, then, you know, maybe we prohibit above or below a certain number of units within a building or something along those lines. You know, I think that there's some, you know, I haven't seen any demonstrated figures, but you know, these stories don't get to us probably because they're made up. So let's, if we can, try to identify some of those, either using the existing platforms to help determine what might be some of those bad actors and maybe do some analysis about what we could do to help prevent that kind of action from taking place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Before we keep going, I want to announce that agenda item number three relating to the Department of Neighborhoods will be rescheduled to a later time.
So we've talked about what happens when you're living offsite, but if you are the primary resident of the unit, that at least a portion of which you're doing as a short term rental, either a spare bedroom or the entire house when you're out of town, you will be able to do that year round. I think there was some confusion about this in public testimony, but there will be no limit to the number of nights you could do out of your primary residence. You will, if you cross that 90 night threshold, under this proposal, wouldn't need to get a new license. And on the next slide, it details what the requirements of that license would be. The main purpose of this license, I think, is to distinguish the primary residence factor and be able to say who's, who's living onsite and who is not. There are a few other pieces that are proposed to be a part of it. Some sort of insurance requirement, requirement that you provide local contact information. This is actually a requirement for long term landlords as well. Requirement that you post emergency information in the unit for the guests who are staying there. So if there's an emergency, they can look somewhere very quick and know what the addresses of where they're staying. And also that, as we talked earlier, that you sign a declaration saying that the unit meets the applicable building and safety codes. The last piece of this puzzle is a license for the platforms that are operating short term rentals. And platform is a term we're using for companies like Airbnb, VRBO. Under this license, there's really two, just two requirements. One is that you provide information to your operators about what Seattle's regulations are. I think a lot of them do that already. And the other is that we are asking that they share basic data with the city on a quarterly basis. And again, it's not data about guests or layout of your house. It is essentially contact name, address of the listing and the number of nights it's been rented in that last quarter. And for the first two, that, those are information, that's information that if people are proactively doing, or following the rules and getting a business license, that will be public already. And the reason why we asked for this data, it's kind of, this whole framework relies on getting the data in terms of the number of nights. That's what allows for the flexibility in this framework and our approach is considerably more flexible than what many other cities have proposed, but that flexibility requires the cooperation in the data. And if there becomes problems with getting the data, I think in order to have a more realistic enforcement scheme, we'll need to look at taking away a threshold or having a more clear distinction between onsite and offsite, if you're going with that same method.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Nate. And I've talked to elected officials in other jurisdictions who've, I've been ahead of this on this. And one of the things I heard from a city in California was, you know, from a policy perspective, we would actually like to have a nuanced policy here. There's certain, certain types of rentals we want to support and others we don't. But we couldn't figure out how to do that because we didn't have the data and we didn't have the assurances from the platform that there would be transparency. And so for us, we felt like we had to decide, did we want to go all in or all out? And we went, you know, whatever that means. They went, they decided to go to a very heavily regulated because they didn't have the data. And I think what I heard you saying is if we can create a place where we have good data, where we're understanding what's happening in our communities, what that means to the long term rental market, if there's tension there, how many units there are, are people paying, playing by the rules, are they safe? We can develop a nuanced policy that I think hopefully can be multiple objectives that you lay out here. And if we find that there's a lack of transparency, we're constantly fighting to get data, we really don't know what's going on and we're just have to kind of trust that the market's going to take care of it, that creates more of a problem where we may need to do stricter regulation, so.
This also points out the need for why we want to have the special license and also the cooperation of the rental platforms, as you said, Councilmember O'Brien. You know, we considered, you know, what if you owned your primary residence and you had one other? You know, how could we accommodate that? And we've heard a lot of comment both today and over the last several months from individuals who own two properties in the city and, you know, they want to do that for the economic benefits that that gives them on these rental platforms. But the city doesn't have the ability to monitor the six or 10 or someday the 20 rental platforms that exist. And, you know, if we have good information and we have good cooperation, if we do the licensing correctly, that then gives us a lot more flexibility to accommodate individuals who have one or two or three or whatever. Because as we heard in testimony today, it really is the commercial operators who are taking advantage of a loophole in the law and operating in residential areas and converting multifamily long term rentals to the short term rentals. That's who we're trying to target. But when we start to dive into how do we do that effectively, we run into all these roadblocks. And that's why we have pled with the rental platforms to, to share basic data, again, not about guests and that type of information, but about the number of days, number of units information, which will allow us to have a very effective regulatory scheme that actually makes it a win-win for everybody. The platforms will be successful and the hosts and the operators will be successful as well. So that's what we're trying to weave through as we've been working on this over the last year and will continue for the next couple of months.
I appreciate that. And I, I think that that distinction between the, what you do on your existing property versus a second unit, I think is a really important one. And Councilmember Herbald, I think your comments about being a landlord, you know, there's, there are properties out there that could be used for both. And there's no doubt that the cost, you know, on a per night basis, the cost of a hotel room is a lot more than even the per night basis of renting expensive housing in the city. And so there's clearly, if you were able to fill up that, that unit on most nights, there's an economic incentive to do that. And like, that's what we're seeing, a lot of people doing that. And Councilmember Herbald, your point of, we have a lot of requirements on landlords that I think most of us believe are really important requirements. And a lot of folks might say, I don't want those requirements, I can make more money doing this. And the result is that some units, where I'm troubled knowing how many, are being taken out of the long term housing market and being used for short term rental. Now that's, I don't have a problem with folks being small business owners and being creative, but I have a significant problem if we are losing critically needed housing units. And so that distinction between saying, hey, you know, I want, I want to let you not be a landlord, just be a renter, because it's easier, I think that gives a signal to folks like, hey, you know, we're going to encourage folks to take units away and I don't want to do that.
That's why I tried to maybe not clearly make a distinction between the people who are doing it now and in the future. I recognize that we, over time, can be taking a lot of important rental units off the market. And I think it's fair in the future to say that if you're going to operate this kind of business in Seattle, these are the rules. But for the folks who got into this business without those rules, it just, it seems, again, to be very problematic to be requiring them to engage in a type of legal relationship that they did not get into this business to engage in. There are other issues like what happens to the tenant in the housing, in the long term housing, when the 90 days is up, is, does just cause apply when, at the end of the rest of the year period, when they want to revert back to the short term rental? Does tenant relocation assistance ordinance apply? How, how does the, how does the property owner get the tenant out in order to exercise their rights to be a short term rental again?
Well, yeah, if they want, and those are the things we looked at. I mean, right now, if they want their mother in law to move back in, there's a, just cause allows for that. If they want, if they live out of town and move back, just cause allows for that. So I think we've entertained a lot of these things and decided when it's appropriate, when it's not, so.
And so in this case, what would be the, the reason would be, would it be change of use? And if so, if it's change of use, then the tenant relocation is in-
For relatives, I believe.
I'm talking about this instance. If somebody wants to begin a short term rental again to an Airbnb guest, how do they, how do they get the tenant out?
Sure, let's work, let's work through that.
We can look at it.
Yeah. There is, I mean, there's a clear exit strategy if it's an independent unit, though. If you decide you don't want to be in that business in this market, you can sell that unit and do pretty well in this market. I mean, no one's being forced to do this, so.
Okay, let's keep going here.
The next two slides are just a summary of what we've talked about, so we don't need to spend too much time on them. But basically here, you can crosswalk the regulation to the policy goal we're trying to achieve. So again, the policy goals are, the primary one, number one, is balancing the need to maintain our housing stock with the economic opportunity that these provides. Number two is level kind of the industry plane, or the regulatory playing field in the industry. And number three relates to the rights and safety of guests, neighbors, operators.
Just a brief mention on how we think this regulation plays with the Hala recommendations. The Hala Committee recommended that to ensure short term rentals are paying all applicable taxes. I think, I think this would help that by requiring platforms to register themselves as well as hosts, we can ensure all taxes are being paid that way. But larger than that, we think it does encourage the use of housing stock in the city for long term rental versus short term. We think that if that's our goal to create affordable housing, we think this plays into that.
So throughout this process, we've been looking at a number of cities and this is, I would say, a hot topic across the country. And different cities are really taking a variety of approaches. On one side of the spectrum, cities would, who mostly are not experiencing a housing crisis like Seattle is, are more focused on sort of making sure people are paying the appropriate taxes and are less concerned about sort of limiting the number of nights and that type of thing. On the other end of the spectrum, some cities are prohibiting short term rentals essentially and like New York City, they prohibit rentals of less than 30 days. Santa Monica requires that the operator lives onsite. And then there are a variety of cities that are sort of somewhere in the middle that we've been looking at. And so this chart just provides a handful of them and sort of what the regulatory environment is. And LA is looking at some regulations where they would have a 90 night limit and that's only allowed if it is your primary residence. So a second home, a third home, a fourth home, you would not be allowed to operate a short term rental at all. San Francisco, similarly, it's in your primary residence. Portland, it's also in your primary residence. And they are all sort of asking the platform to cooperate in some, in differing ways. And then Philadelphia is a model that actually, some of the platforms pointed us to as a good model and they have a limit on up to 90 nights if it's not your primary residence. And I've talked with some of the, their enforcement staff in that area. And so while they have a similar framework to what we are proposing here, they don't have a requirement to, that the platforms provide data and they are having a very difficult time with enforcing these provisions because even on a complaint basis, it is difficult to figure out the number of nights that a host has rented. And if you are asking the operator to provide that data, you know, you'll get varying levels, levels of compliance. So we'll continue to sort of monitor and look at what other, what other cities are doing and what is the most effective strategy so we can proactively enforce the regulations and make sure people are in compliance.
And I, I think when we talk about what that registration, as I mentioned earlier, I, you know, I, there's multiple platforms and someone could do 89 nights on Airbnb and 89 nights on VRBO and 89, you know, and that becomes really difficult for us to track unless we have a requirement that you get a, you know, a Seattle registration and that registration number has to be posted. And so when we go to look at it and police it, we can say, oh, this is the same unit as this one over here.
Yeah, and we are, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just as we move forward, I think understanding how that functions is going to be really important.
Yeah, and we are looking at sort of technology solutions so that if, as we're getting the data from the multiple platforms, we can cross check against addresses and listing names and to get the total number of nights across all the platforms.
The cross listing is, is one of the reasons why we can't just ask the platforms to say, turn it off after 90 days, because-
They might be compliant within the platform-
Right.
But not cross platform.
Ally, can you check the, the LA proposal is a proposal, it's not passed yet, correct?
Correct.
Can you check what it is that the property owners are expected to do with their second homes that they're currently using as short term rentals? Or is this a forward looking proposal?
I, right now, it is actually prohibited in LA is my understanding, but I will confirm that, so they're-
It already is.
It is, yeah, it's already prohibited and they have some different rules around sort of rent control and those sorts of things. And so I need, I'll look into it in more detail.
We don't have a situation where there are a whole bunch of property owners who are already doing this, that the legislation is now going to prohibit them from doing something that they're already doing with their second home?
Or not doing it lawfully.
Or not doing it lawfully.
Yeah. So, you know, we wanted to sort of highlight how this fits into the city's race and social justice initiative. And, you know, this, I think this proposal looks, hits this in a number of ways. I mean, low income households are probably most affected by our lack of affordable housing and are probably least likely to be negatively affected when we put restrictions on the second, third and fourth homes. Because this proposal will allow them the economic benefit of renting out a room or a portion of their home to help them stay in place, but they're less likely to have second, third, second, third and fourth homes. And then, and so there is sort of a balance there in terms of who, who is benefiting, who are we focusing on here? And then in terms of next steps, as Councilmember Burgess mentioned, this is the first discussion in the, at council on this topic. We will have a second discussion on July 20th, but we'll also have the public hearing on the land use code portion of the proposal, as, you know, as well as the normal public comment, I presume. And then we'll be following that with some additional discussions and potentially a vote in August, looking at a tentative final vote sometime in August and September. And then we are looking at a, a bit of a longer horizon in terms of implementation so we can make sure we have the technology and tools in place to make the registration process sort of streamlined as much as possible. We have the systems in place to actually monitor the data and give people an opportunity to make their decisions about how they're going to move forward with their properties.
Just a quick question and comment. I see a lot of folks in the audience taking pictures of this slide. For the public who's at home, you can find all this material on the city's website at the Affordable Housing, Neighborhood and Finance Committee page. David, this is the first time in my five and a half months on the city council that I've heard such a strong voice for people asking us to tax them. And what, what I heard from-
You don't want to lose that energy.
Yeah, that's right, we don't. And, and what I heard from you is that there are some regulatory barriers in Olympia. And so what I'd ask is that the next briefing that we have, that we have some folks from the Office of Intergovernmental Relations here to talk to us a little bit about the legislative agenda process for 2017 and how we might incorporate some of these options into our 2017 legislative agenda.
Happy to do that. I would just note, as a, as a former staffer in the Houston Credit Caucus, the challenges we face in passing taxes are very large and the legislature, the legislature will be really focused on education this year.
This is a really powerful group out here, though. However, I would remind, I would remind Seattle voters that on August 2nd, they will be able to vote on renewal and expansion of the Seattle Housing Levy and we probably shouldn't say much more than that.
Yes.
Yes, there will be a vote. Thank you very much. As we've mentioned, we'll be dealing with this topic many times over the coming months. And we appreciate the comments from the public today as we consider refinements and changes. We appreciate that and you can continue to share your comments by email and even traditional letters if you would like to send those. We only get one or two a week, so yours would be noticed. We're going to move now to item number two on our agenda, which is reconsideration of the first quarter employment ordinance. And Nate, if you would read that in and I'd invite those presenters to join us.
Council Bill 118697, an ordinance relating to this city employment, commonly referred to as the first quarter 2016 employment ordinance.
Yes, you have. You got your questions answered.
Briefing discussion and possible vote.
No, it was fine. Thank you very much. This is reconsideration of this matter. It was before the committee, two meetings ago, I believe. So Patricia, if you want to just briefly remind us what this is all about?
Yes, and your presenters from the Personnel Department are on their way. I'm Patricia Lee from the Council Central Staff. So the council authorizes city positions and any new pay titles or pay ranges. And every year you adopt a position list. Usually comes in with a budget, it's adopted by the end of the year that authorizes every position in the city and the pay range for it. During the year, there are changes that are required and so you have a quarterly ordinance that comes to you known as the Quarterly Employment Ordinance that requests changes by the executive on position titles or pay ranges. With that, I'm going to let the rest of our group introduce themselves.
David Brocelano, Director of Labor Relations.
Elaine Gentillo, Manager of Compensation Classification.
Good morning, I'm Kimberly Loving. I'm the Director of Administration for SDHR.
Kimberly's new to SDHR, she's been here two months, so it's good for her to see because these quarterly ordinances, as you would think, would come up about four times, four times a year. Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity.
Really welcome, again, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present the first quarterly ordinance. We do apologize for the confusion that occurred in the previous council committee meeting. Hope to answer all your questions, make sure that you understand everything that's in the content of, of this council bill. Essentially, what this council bill does is three things. It establishes nine positions that'll be exempt from civil service. As you might know, most city employees are covered under civil service, but some positions are determined to be exempt. And that determination is by the SDHR director utilizing criteria that's in a personnel rule that is 2.2.3. And to mention what those criteria are, a high degree of professional responsiveness and individual accountability, confidential fiduciary relationship to reporting authority or judicial positions that are insulated as their branches of government. These nine positions meet the first criteria. Five of these positions are filled, four are vacant positions, two of these positions that were filled are represented by union employees. So we do give notice to Local 77 and let them know that there's two positions going outside of their bargaining unit. About half of the nine are ITA positions, the highest level of IT positions that we have in the city. So that's the first thing that this ordinance does is designate nine positions as exempt. I'll keep on going.
We've actually, we talked about this at the previous committee meeting and then we've had some email exchanges that answered a lot of questions. So maybe, unless you all want to-
The question I had has been resolved.
Great.
So-
Ditto.
Good. So David, we'd love to listen to you much longer, but I think what I'm going to do is move adoption of Council Bill 118697.
Second. Oh, sorry.
You've eaten to it, it's all good.
Okay, any further comments? All in favor of adopting the ordinance? Vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So that's the recommendation of the council.
Thank you, committee.
Thank you very much. We will now, we've moved item three, the Department of Neighborhoods Equity Report to a future meeting and we'll take up item number four, which is the 2015 Multi-Tax Exemption Annual Report and the First Trimester 2016 Report. I'd invite those presenters to join us, please. If we could have introductions.
Emily Alvarado, Office of Housing.
I'm Mike Kent from the Office of Housing.
Great, welcome to both of you. Please proceed.
So as the PowerPoint warms-
So as the PowerPoint warms up, just to say, we're really happy to be here today and to provide, and have this opportunity to discuss the multifamily tax exemption program. As you might know, this is a program that's one of our key tools for creating affordable housing in the city. And for a little context, we were before city council in fall of last year to renew and expand this program. That was acting upon one of the 65 hollow recommendations, was a strong recommendation to renew and expand this program. And since last fall, we have sent you two reports on this program. City ordinance requires us to send three progress reports a year and also an annual report. So you've received our annual report, which covered the 2015 year, and also our first trimester report, which covers the first trimester of 2016. To note, that first trimester report is really what we'll focus on today, in part because that shows the findings of how implementation of Program 5, the one that we renewed and put in place in the end of last year, is doing. For the benefit, I know some of you know MFTE well, and some, for some, it's a new program, so wanted to give a sense of what MFTE does and a little background on the program. It is an incentive program. It's one of our key city incentive programs. And it is a tax exemption that's available to mostly new development, although it can work for certain cases of major rehabilitation of properties. But it works for new construction. And in exchange for a tax exemption, units are made affordable for 12 years. And units are made affordable at the following affordability levels. Those are levels that are passed by council and that we calibrate to make sure we're getting good public benefit. Right now, they are 40% AMI for CDOs, 65% AMI for studios, 75% for one bedrooms, 85% for two bedrooms, and 90% for three bedrooms. I do recognize that those numbers are sometimes meaningless. So just to give a sense, we're looking at a studio renting at $1,028 and a one-bedroom, for example, renting at 1,355. So well below the average market rate rents in the city, yes.
Emily, can you remind us not only what CDO stands for, but the threshold of a CDO?
Sure. A CDO is a small efficiency dwelling unit. And after council made, created this new unit a year and a half, two years ago now, the unit has, and I'll turn over to Mike, it is...
So the, the regulations are that a CDO unit, among other, other restrictions, that needs to have no less than 150 and no more than 220 square feet of combined living and sleeping space. So that does not include the bathroom, cabinetry, countertops, other things like that. It's just the living and sleeping spaces, again, between 150 and 220. Anything over 220 square feet would be classified as a, as a studio. But it's important also just to remember that that's a determination that's done at DCI. So we at the Office of Housing follow their lead on determining conclusively whether a unit is or is not a CDO.
And so in this case, Emily, just to give an example, you said AMI was a little more than $1,000 a month in rent, so we'd be talking about 40% of about $1,000 a month?
So for the CDO, the 40% rent would be $633 for an affordable CDO under this program.
And that's inclusive of rent and utilities?
Got it. Thank you.
So in exchange for providing those affordable rents, property owners receive a tax exemption. And this exemption applies only to the value of the residential portion of the building. It doesn't apply to the land or the non-residential space, which are fully taxable.
And in a building, let's just make this up, there's 100 units, and 20 of them are participating in the multifamily tax exemption. The, the tax waiver, or whatever we want to call it, applies to which of the 100 units?
All of the 100 units.
Okay. And I think, okay, I'll hold off my next question because it's coming.
Okay. As part of the 25 program, 2015 program renewal, we did make some changes and improvements to the program. We added these two programs, a family-sized unit program and a small unit program, intended to incentivize the creation of family-sized units and to make sure that for those buildings providing smaller units, that we were getting inadequate public benefit. We also created new unit types. The congregate units were added, congregate residences were added to the program as well as a three-bedroom unit. We strengthened tenant protections and included new reporting requirements. And we changed the geography of the program to make it available in all areas that are zoned for multifamily development. So looking at the benefits of this program, really, the program creates rent and income-restricted units in market-rate buildings in neighborhoods across the city. That is the benefit. And our benefit, I think, can most clearly be calculated in terms of rent buydown or rent savings for tenants, tenants experience rent savings off of rent levels. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. We have significant number of units that are created through this program. Currently, there are over 2,500 affordable units created in market-rate projects. There are about 1,200 affordable units created in subsidized projects that are also, that are otherwise subsidized and typically have a tax exemption from the state on them. The purpose for this tax exemption is in the event that too many households make more than 50% AMI, if they go up to 60. In some cases, the subsidized project could lose their state tax exemption, and then MFTE takes over and makes sure that they have a tax exemption on their property.
And these numbers here, the 2,500, the 1,200, the 2,000, these are the current units that are active in the program?
The 2,000 is, are in the pipeline. The 2,500 are active in market-rate buildings, 1,200 are active in otherwise subsidized, but then another 2,000 are approved but in development.
Okay, good, thank you.
So the 1,200 affordable homes in subsidized projects, are you foc, is this number the tax credits? Or is it the tax credit buildings? Or is that the nonprofits? Because I know the tax credit buildings are typically, they're, they're for-profit developers, and the result is, it's, it's a really happy result because it's an example of a for-profit development that once they, they use the MFT along with the tax credit, it's, it generally results in all of the units being affordable as opposed to only the 25%. But then I also know that nonprofits sometimes, used to, more so, I think, that under older versions of the program, would sometimes use it when they had funding for, let's say, you know, 80% AMI property. It allowed them to bring more of the units down to a lower affordability with this extra financing tool.
So the 1,200 affordable units, I think, are primarily in buildings owned by nonprofits. They are receiving, in most cases, they use the tax credit program to help finance those buildings, but they also might have levy funds in those properties. An example is 12th Avenue Arts that received an MFT tax exemption and is also subsidized and is also owned by a nonprofit. The state tax exemption, what that does is it requires that 75% of the units be affordable at 50% of AMI and below. And it requires an annual income certification of the tenants. In the event that any of those tenants start to go up to 60% AMI, they might not qualify for that state tax exemption. So MFTE, they are still providing affordable units below the threshold of MFT, but the MFT tax exemption makes sure that the property is exempt.
So the example, the first example I gave of the for-profit developments that use tax credit financing but also use MFT, that would be in the first 2,500, those, those units?
I'm not sure of how many private tax credit properties are using MFT.
Yeah, so we don't necessarily look at the financing behind a, an otherwise market-rate project. So is it plausible? Sure, but that's not something that we have.
Right. I, I might be mistaken. I, I thought I remembered seeing that being reported, but if you're not looking at it, it wouldn't have been reported, so.
And Emily, your last bullet here is really interesting to me. Older MFT buildings maintaining significant rent savings comparable to new MFT buildings, do you mean those buildings that are outside the 12-year window? That becomes sort of, as we have now termed them, naturally occurring affordable housing, is what you're referring to?
So this is still within the 12-year window. What happened is, as part of program renewal, there was a new requirement put in that has the Office of Housing look at year seven properties that are participating in the MFT program, to see what the market rate rents are at year seven, to really keep an eye on whether we're getting an adequate rent buydown or rent savings on year seven as we are on year one. So in our annual report, we had one property that is currently in year seven of the 12-year MFT period. It's Alley 24. And we looked at the rents in that property, but we also, because it was only one, we looked at rents using Dupre &amp; Scott rent data. And it shows that in year seven, buildings are still having rents that are comparable to market rate rents on year one of a building. They're, they're retaining a lot of their high rent value. And so we continue to get significant rent savings off of properties, off of units, even in year seven. Just to point out that what those rent savings are, they are, on average, for studios, $6,000 a year for a tenant. And for the one-bedroom or two-bedroom units, there are more than $7,000 a year for a tenant. So that's the delta between market rate rents in new construction buildings and the affordable rents that are regulated under MFT.
And are we also tracking the number of units that are losing their affordability because they've timed out of the program?
Yep. So we track expirations. That's included in our annual report. We had one expiration of a building last year. We, because there was more participation in the program in more recent years, it won't be for another few years until we have more turnover from the program. And in the early years of the program, this was a 10-year tax exemption, so we are seeing some of those turnover faster than they will turnover in the future. Also to point out that we are, you know, working, the city is working on a property tax exemption program, a preservation tax exemption program, that could be applied to existing buildings to get affordable housing in those existing buildings. That's something that's being worked on in Olympia, that could apply hypothetically to those properties in the future. So in addition to our benefits, the program also has costs. And what we do is we carefully calibrate the program to be sure that this public benefit in the, in the form of below-market rents is sufficient to justify the cost of the program. And the cost takes on two forms. It is, one, the tax revenue that's not captured by the assessor's office and is deferred until property's new construction value is added back on to the tax roll after MFT completion. We also have a second cost, which is tax revenue that is captured by the assessor and then is redistributed to other taxpayers. That shift results in a cost to homeowners. In, for this year, for the 2016 year, the cost of the program was not, the 2015 year, 2016 year, the cost of the program is $9.4 million in forgone tax revenue and $7.5 million in shifted tax revenue.
But that is not a cumulative number?
Correct.
That is for the projects that entered the program in 2015, correct?
Correct.
Not just that entered in 2015, but that had been, that entered the program prior to 2015 through 2015, and therefore were active in the current tax year.
The total sum of the program for all units for one year.
So there's no way we're getting 4,000-plus affordable houses on the marketplace for $9.4 million? That's a really good number.
And, and for some people, you know, in full disclosure, for some people, it would be the 9.4 plus the 7.5. So even for that 16 million, as you saw, the tax save, the rent savings that we highlighted in the other slide, you're comparing something of, you know, $13 million in rent savings to $16 million in costs for the program.
But the 7.5 million shifted tax revenue, that's shifted to other property taxpayers. So doesn't the city still collect its portion of that?
Yes.
So the actual, if you wanted to say that the lost revenue to the city of Seattle is the $9.4 million figure?
Correct.
And...
Until 2014, we thought that the entire cost was redistributed to other taxpayers. And I think it was around 2014, we discovered that actually, no, there's, because of the way the assessor goes out and assesses property, and at the time that they do it, as compared to when the construction is happening, there is this defer, this, this deferral, I guess, is what you'd call it.
So then to Councilmember Johnson's point, if, if the city, and I'll just round this down to $9 million a year, if the city, is that a wise investment to defer $9 million in 2016 to get those early, the 4,200 or whatever it was, number of units? You have to ask that question every year, because that $9.4 million is going to fluctuate depending on how many units are in the program.
Correct.
But I think that's a great investment, which, you know, we're going to have the housing levy on the ballot on August 2nd, and that levy's not going to produce units at, at that rate of efficiency.
Well, you know, they're very different tools.
Very different, yeah.
Each filling an important role in our toolbox. This is serving, in general, a higher income, low-income resident than the levy typically serves.
I was only making that comparison on the basis of the cost to produce a unit. So, and we want both of these programs.
Yes.
Obviously. The preservation measure that we tried to get passed in Olympia this last session, and I'm very confident we'll try again this next session, would have extended this program in a slightly different way, but essentially the same, to properties that are not new construction but remodeled or preserved properties. Have we done any forecasting on how many units that might be and how that might work out? How would we do a comparison to what we're seeing here?
Yeah, we do have modeling. I am not going to make up the number off the top of my head, which I don't recall at this time. In, in some cases, that tax exemption could be applied to properties that are terming out of MFT. In other cases, it could be used on properties that are just providing lower, that are low-cost housing already in the city. And the tax exemption would ensure that we can rent and income restrict those units for a set period of time, so that we can ensure that some tenants are not displaced for years.
So when we get ready to work in the fall on our legislative agenda, we probably want to have that analysis and be able to make that case for the, for the value of this program.
We can do that.
So for 2015 ballpark, and I know, like, I'm just thinking sort of the back-of-the-envelope calculation. I know it's going to be different depending on whether or not studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms. But how many, how many units were online as of 2015?
It's about 2,000 of the, that was the number, 2,000 of the market rate units and about 1,200 of the afforded, of the subsidized units.
All right, thank you.
So looking at Program 5 and what we're getting already out of this program that we renewed at the end of the year.
And just to clarify, Program 5 is because of the renewal? It's the fifth time and...
Correct. It's been renewed five times, and there are changes that are made to the programs each of those times. In this new program, we created a family-sized program. And in doing so, we said that 20% of the units would be set aside as affordable so long as the developer provided a threshold number of two-bedroom units. And that threshold number is related to the overall number of units in the property. And in essence, if we're provided those family-sized units, two-bedroom or greater, then the set aside was 20% of the units set aside as affordable. In properties that did not provide us with family-sized units, so buildings with studios and ones or CDOs and studios, then 25% of the units would need to be set aside as affordable. To date, what we've seen is we've had nine projects approved for application under the family-sized program and one project that's been approved under the small unit program. So we know that both are viable. And we are seeing, we have already one three-bedroom unit that we've gotten out of the family-sized unit program as well.
Emily, it'd be helpful to know just in terms of what that looks like related to the regular marketplace. We continue to hear from folks that basically what the marketplace is building right now is studios and one-bedrooms and very few two-bedroom, three-bedrooms, if any. So I think it'd be helpful to put that into context about what's been in the permanent pipeline for the last seven months, so that we can see what percentage we're creating versus what... versus what percentage the private marketplace is creating.
Be happy to follow up on that.
Thanks.
In looking at overall participation, we think of participation rates as a really good indicator of how we're calibrating this program. One way to think about it is, if 100% of the properties were participating in the MFTE program, it's probably because we're not asking for enough. That means that luxury buildings would be participating in the program, and the rent savings that we're getting off of the average building would not be good enough. If we're getting zero participation because we've set the affordability restrictions as too stringent, we would not be happy because we would not be getting any affordable units. So 50% is what we're currently seeing off of our analysis of eligible projects applying for this program, which I think demonstrates, it's pretty consistent with where we have been in the last few years, and I think it demonstrates that we're calibrating this program quite well. Obviously, that participation rate varies. In higher rent neighborhoods, we see lower participation because the rent buydown is too high and they don't choose to participate in the program. In lower rent areas, we see a highest number of participation. But what we do in calibration is, we want to make sure that we're not wholesale losing a significant number in neighborhoods, and we haven't been doing that to date. Another significant change that we included as part of the update to MFTE is, we expanded the geographic area. So we went from residential-targeted areas that were coterminous with the urban centers and urban villages, and it expanded it to be in all areas where multifamily housing can be developed. And the purpose of that was to make sure that where multifamily housing was being provided, we also provided a tool where we could get affordable housing. And as a result of that extension, we have seen two projects that have come in in the last few months that would not have been possible under our last geographic boundary. And those are in high-growth areas. We see in the central area and also in Ballard, we have projects that are coming under the new geography. What questions do you have for us?
Questions?
One of the things, it's not a question, but for the audience that's watching at home, Emily, that I want to highlight is, we as a city are also contemplating changes to the mandatory housing affordability residential framework that'll be coming forward. This would put an additional 38 years of affordability above and beyond what we have in the multifamily tax exemption program. So as you so well stated earlier, there are multiple tools in our toolbox that we're trying to use in order to help maintain affordability in the city. The housing levy is one of those, the multifamily tax exemption credit is another. And then this framework that we're proposing would create a very deep level of affordability for a very long period of time. So there's a lot of opportunities for the public to engage with us on that issue, which will be in front of council sometime this summer.
And the wonderful thing about the framework for that bill is, it doesn't allow for double counting of MFTE units with MHA units.
It's an important addition. Thank you for that point.
Can you go back to slide number three, please, at the beginning? The 2,500 units existing in the program today that are market-rate units, is it safe to assume that the vast majority, if not all of those, are private-sector buildings?
Yes.
And that's not, I know you already asked that, I'm just double-checking, answered this, that's not, this 2,500 isn't for the life of the program, that is in 2015?
That's current.
Okay.
Yeah. And so I guess if anything's missing, it's that there are a small number of units that have aged out of the program that are not included on that.
Okay.
Right. So these are the 2,500 units active in 2015. Some will age out, some new ones will be added this year, so that's why that number's going to fluctuate. So one of the objections I heard to the expansion of MFTE to the non-new construction, the preservation measure that we tried to get through Olympia this last session, was that we don't want to subsidize the private sector. But the current MFTE program is, in fact, doing that, and we've created 2,500 units of market-rate housing. So what am I missing there?
You're not missing anything. The, this is one of the tools that we use as an incentive program to engage with the private market. And also, the preservation tax exemption is designed as a tool that would work to engage the private market. It would also work for nonprofits, just as this program also works for nonprofits. But what we recognize is that we need as many tools as we can get right now because we have an affordable housing crisis, and this is one of those tools to engage a different sector in providing affordability.
Good. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
I have one more question. What can you tell us about how you are affirmatively marketing the program?
Yeah, great question. So what we had talked about last time we were before council is the data work that we were doing as a baseline to get a better understanding of who is living in MFTE properties. We did launch a survey last time to try to understand who MFTE, our tenants, are. We are continuing to do the outreach to get that data, because I think any good affirmative marketing plan will start with us understanding who we're currently serving. We do also have plans, once we get that data, to think about what outreach looks like in terms of partnerships with organizations. I had a meeting with Allyship, for example, to think about how we use partner organizations in the community and connect them with our website to make sure that people are aware of properties when they're coming into the MFTE program and can have a good shot at getting in them.
I mean, there are a couple dozen renters in the city who, I think, on a regular basis, because they've lived in MFTE units before, they like living in MFTE units before, and I know they contact your office to find out, okay, who's likely to have openings at any given time. And I know you track that information and provide it when asked, and that's really helpful. But I don't think renters in general know to call OH to ask for this kind of arcane information. So to the extent that the folks that are doing outreach to tenants about avail, I mean, I know we have the city's website that we've worked on with.
Housing Search Northwest.
Yes, yes. Whether, I've asked this before, whether or not we could have a tab that sorts for MFTE units or some other way of getting the word out to folks, rather than, you know, those handful people who know about this program and know that OH tracks the vacancies and can provide that information.
Yes, so that's good feedback. Appreciate that. So people who are watching do know that all of the buildings that participate in MFTE are available on our website. We do include links to the properties so that people can get in touch with the leasing management to try to become tenants at those properties. We do indicate as well, when we know of a significant number of units that are available, for example, when a new property opens, we do indicate that on our website.
On the website.
So it is on our website now, so please go there. And we're now working, the next step is to figure out how to enhance that tool to partner with organizations to help do more affirmative marketing.
I have one other point on that piece. Have you begun conversations with landlords that are participating in MFTE about their interest in partnership with the landlord liaison program?
Good question. I don't know that we've done a specific mailer or...
And I don't know that the income of the tenant for an MFTE unit is quite the same profile as a landlord liaison program tenant, but I think in our efforts to try to increase the number of landlords who are participating in that program, I think that might be a good group of property owners to reach out to.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. And that concludes our agenda, so we'll be adjourned. Thank you.